Everybody good? We'd like to welcome you to our Bountiful City Council Work Session today, Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and we are excited to pick up where we left off to talk about the general plan. Mr. Francisco Estorga.
Thank you, Mayor Harris and council members. I do apologize that I am having computer issues and I am unable to present what we have exactly in the packet, so we're just going to go a little bit old school and simply, we all have our packets in front of us. And we do apologize, IT is currently working on that right now. So, we had this, we started this conversation, we had just a few minutes during the March 25th, 2025 work session discussion where we've, as indicated on the schedule that we created a long time ago, we were, we always committed to bring you all the goals in the same place. This started back in 20, January of 2024 is when we proposed that schedule at the City Council Retreat, and we're fulfilling that commitment. So with that said, I'll just jump on in that these are all the goals that we have reviewed thus far with the general plan as we've taken a look at all of them through their specific element. If you recall, we looked at land use, economic development, we looked at transportation, inactive transportation, we looked at housing, and we looked at the water and sustainability element. So, these goals should not be anything new to you, but rather, we, and this how they were always intended to be, based on the six different guiding principles, which was a consolidated effort that came from that, the drafted community vision statement, that's on page three of your staff reports, which we then created, or drafted, I should say, the guiding principles. Then we drafted the goals, and now we have all of the goals in their corresponding categories with the specific actions or tasks for each one of these items. Or I should, the better word is not task, is more of the strategy for it. So during that meeting that we had two weeks ago, on March 25th, we went, we moved forward and we looked at welcoming community guiding principle, where we looked at goal 1, 2, 3, and 4, and all the subsequent actions. Just to give you a quick reminder in primer, council member Bradshaw asked about the three actions on goal 4. The explanation we provided is that we wanted to keep the exact language from the requirements regarding the moderate income housing report. And then we moved on to page 7, which was the, which is the business friendly community section. So, we want to continue our conversation from that point on. I think we were only given 10 minutes from that point on, so we just want to focus with the first goal of that item, spark investment and development in downtown through strategic infrastructure improvement. So if that's okay, Mayor, we'd like to take each goal at a time and work our way out through the remaining goals within the guiding principles.
Great, thank you.
I've got a question. I'm just going back to goal 4 that you referenced in welcoming community. Was that the one that council member Bradshaw had referenced?
Correct.
I had a question about that because it says support efforts to develop more affordable housing options, and I was wondering if we are meaning more comma affordable housing options or more affordable housing options? Those are two different things.
We copied and pasted the exact wording from state code, and this was the same response that I had two weeks ago in that at one point where we originally adopted these, 2020, we changed the formatting slightly and we changed a few things, and then the state rejected our moderate income housing report because we didn't match the exact same language that was printed in code section 109A, which is LUDMA. So we simply chose to keep the exact same wording, exact same spelling and punctuation as indicated on state code, so we don't get penalized for trying to amend it or change it. And I think Gary has a question or a comment, I'm sorry.
And I think the interpretation of that is additional affordable housing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we have Councilwoman Bradshaw joining us, and if we could just, if you don't mind just saying something and we'll test the connection, make sure that you're with us.
Hello, from Washington DC.
Great, okay, loud and clear, thank you. Okay, so thanks for joining us online, Councilwoman Bradshaw, and we'll continue with this discussion. So what do you recommend? Where should we start?
Yeah, so we're on page 7, goal 1, under a business friendly community, which was the three actions under goal 1, spark investment and development in downtown through strategic infrastructure improvements. So, any comments regarding, or?
I think those look great.
Sorry, I would request that we can, I'm using the packet from last time because I made extensive notes on it, so I'm going to have to follow the page numbers separately, I guess. On page 6, this was something that I started to bring up at the last meeting, and I wanted to, wanted to talk about it here today. So I'm sorry because it brings us back a page. But in goal 1, action 2, where we talk about widening or buffer pedestrian facilities, I would request that we put widen and or buffer actor, active transportation facilities because we're really talking about more than pedestrian, and in the goals of our master plan update, we specifically cited active transportation as a category that we were going to consider in this section, and it's just not as descriptive or accurate as the more inclusive term that includes a wider range of all of the different types of active transportation, and?
Okay.
Before we get there, if we turn the page to the connected community, so this is the third guiding principle.
Yeah.
If we look at goal 1, action 2, if I may read it, "Develop and apply complete street design principles as identified in relevant plans for future roadway projects. Complete streets are designed to, yeah, designed to facilitate safe, comfortable, and efficient travel for all modes of transportation." And the corresponding item regarding this specific strategy or action was intended to address active transportation needs. So my, not caution, but my comment is simply is that we do find that we address the comments from the August 13th, 2024 meeting in this goal, and that's why we worded it this way as you find that on the connected community item, the third principle, they're all regarding transportation. So, and I spent obviously time reviewing this, so if you feel we need to change that second one, or yes, action 2 of goal 1 of welcoming community, we can, but we thought that we already addressed it in, under connected community.
Yeah, that makes sense. What do you think?
I just think throughout the document, especially where we have this very important and really long discussed, and I think actually really well put together, these guiding principles and all the goals and actions. I think we have lots of different ways that we're referring to this. We say pedestrians, we talk about different modes, and I think active transportation is something that's used across the board. U.S. Department of Transportation, the legislature uses it, and it's a widely used term of art by the WASAT Front Regional Council, U. dot UTA. I think when we're just kind of talking about all of these different range of like, you know, the facilities on roads, I would love to just have it referred to as active transportation because it's a known term of art in policy and planning, and it includes the walkers, bikers, scooter, you know, all of the different modes.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Councilwoman Bradshaw?
Thanks, Mayor. I noticed that too, that we had this pedestrian facility language in goal 1, action 2, but different language later on. And as I thought about it and checked in a little bit with Francisco after the last meeting, I think we're aiming for two different things, and that's why the different action items under the different goals have slightly different language. We had a lot of discussion about areas where complete streets and a full contingent of active transportation elements made sense, and we also had some discussions about certain streets that, you know, we don't have a lot of ability to, you know, we need them as high capacity, high carrying streets, and doing various tactics on an active transportation would probably require us to do things like going into, you know, people's yards and, and, you know, taking property in order to, you know, accomplish all the things we might want that road to do, but there could be some things short of that that would increase pedestrian safety and the general feeling that people would feel safe walking on certain streets. And so as I looked at those, I got to be a little more comfortable that they are aiming at different things and that improving a street and improving its walkability, particularly for pedestrians, we shouldn't let that good goal be stymied from the perfect goal of a complete street and active transportation. And so we should make improvements where we can, even if we can't make as many improvements as would make it a complete street under all of those state definitions. And so to me, it felt comfortable to have slightly different action items representing, you know, different pathways to making improvements on some of those certain very high traffic streets. So I'd be more in favor of keeping the welcoming community, goal 1, action 2, as drafted for the things that'll help us improve, and then focusing on a connected community, goal 1, action 2, for opportunities where we can kind of go all the way with complete streets and active transportation, so that we don't let good be the enemy of perfect. That's my feedback.
Okay. Councilwoman Murray or Councilwoman Child, what are your thoughts on that?
I like the, I like the thoughts that Councilwoman Bradshaw shared. I can go with that.
Okay. Does that, what do you think, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well. I feel like the two categories, encouraging the preservation and creation of welcoming and attractive neighborhoods, and then the balanced travel modes, they feel enough different to me that I feel comfortable with what's written.
Okay, all right, so?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
So, I think hearing Councilmember Bradshaw discuss that about the welcoming community, that does make sense to me as well with action item number 2. But in connected community, goal 1, action 2, I just, it seemed like what you were suggesting is include active transportation in that, in that action 2, or saying that that would be a good place to include active transportation in the complete street design principles. Did I hear something different, or is that what?
So it says, "An efficient travel for all modes of transportation." So do you think that that encompasses the idea of what you're talking about?
I'm just wondering why we're not using the words active transportation.
It's probably, I think it's implied, but I mean?
Is there an intention to not include that in the language?
Nope. It's, we have no intention of not using it. The, I think that it, it came about, the reason why it's not being used in that, when we had the August 13th, 2024 meeting, we matched all of our current general plan, transportation related principal, task, actions with seven categories of the South Davis County Active Transportation Plan. If you recall, it was multimodal integration, complete streets, I have them here, street and path connectivity, walkable parking, and so forth, in that all of these principles, such as complete street, they identified it as a component of active transportation. Or that's how at least the document was drafted, so then we created that, not comparison, but we meshed it together with what we have here. And I think that's why the term active transportation was not utilized throughout these goals. However, as Mayor Harris simply implied, that's the second part of connected community, goal 1, action 2, it's that second sentence. Complete streets are designed to facilitate safe, comfortable, and efficient travel for all modes of transportation. That's what active transportation is.
So, what do you think, Councilwoman Price Huish? Do you feel like that covers it? Efficient travel for all modes of transportation?
I can accept that. I mean, there are a few places where, again, I'm just, where I think we're saying all these different things, again, in the next goal, goal 2, on connected community, we're kind of, I feel like we're just kind of dancing around active transportation. I like work with neighboring municipalities and regional partners to identify a non-motorized corridor between communities. Again, that's like now our third way of referring to what is kind of basically active transportation. And maybe, again, the first one, I can accept that in welcoming community because maybe we are really just referring to pedestrians in that one, or it's appropriate in that one. But here, I think, working with regional partners to identify an active transportation corridor between communities, to me, that's more simple. It says what we're talking about, it's all of those non-motorized modes that are already just kind of, you know?
Yeah, I get what you're saying. On goal 1, under connected community, balanced travel modes to move people safely and efficiently throughout the city, and above it, guiding principle, complete networks for pedestrian, bicycles, transits, and vehicles. So it's, it's, you know, laying out there the different types of transportation modes, which is active, you know, including active transportation, right? So, but is there, maybe, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Price Huish, if we just go through one at a time, and then as there comes a time, if you feel like something should be added or changed or edited, then we can discuss it. So it seems like we were done with the first one, welcoming community. Is everybody okay to move on past that one?
Yes.
Okay. And so now if we look at a business friendly community, just so we take them in order, anybody have any issues or thoughts on this guiding principle, goal 1, 2, and 3? I really liked it as written. Any other questions or comments?
My side.
I didn't have any changes.
Okay. Okay, then let's move to the next one, a connected community. Any, any specific things, Councilwoman Price Huish, or anyone else, that you, that you would like to see changed about this, or added, or thoughts or questions on this?
Well, I would suggest in goal 2, action 1, we just say, identify active transportation corridor between communities, instead of a non-motorized, i.e., bicycle and pedestrian.
We're looking at goal 2, action 1?
Goal 2, action 1. Okay, so you were suggesting, instead of, so keep work with neighboring municipalities and regional partners?
Absolutely.
To identify?
An active transportation corridor between communities.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts or questions on that?
I'm just looking up the definition of active transportation. It says, "Human-powered mobility, such as biking or walking. It directly replaces motor vehicles traveled." So with that definition, I feel comfortable with this change that Councilwoman Price Huish is suggesting.
Okay. Councilwoman Bradshaw?
I was just going to ask if she could read it again, so that I can kind of write it where it would go in that goal.
Just work with neighboring municipalities and regional partners to identify an active transportation corridor between communities.
Okay, so then I guess my question, based on kind of how that fits, is, in no way am I opposed to working with our neighboring municipalities and regional partners. It seems to me that some of this already happens with WFRC and Davis County, and I'm just wondering if we're placing the goal in the right spot, since these are goals specific to the general plan versus working with these entities that already exist and the frameworks that already exist to do active transportation planning? And I guess I'm going, I'm pitching a broad question sort of to Francisco of, what's different from what we are doing existing in transportation and active transportation planning with our neighboring municipalities and our regional transportation planning, metropolitan planning organizations? And then what would this goal be that is enhanced or different from that effort? Because to me, the goal ought to be enhanced and different than kind of the existing baseline. That was really broad, so good luck, take it wherever it takes you.
So are you asking about action 1 and action 2?
Well, I'm asking about action item 2, but then if we're adding, if we add Councilwoman Price Huish's language, then to me, it feels, it just feels like, but we're already doing that, is that a different goal? Or is it just restating a practice that is already happening?
No, we see it as two different goals, and the first one is, it's more of a continuing to work somewhat with the governor's vision for all connected communities through that non-motorized corridor. And the second one, it focuses more on transit ridership. And while the second part of that second goal, the first last mile access to the regional transportation system may be a portion, no, no, that, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, that is, it's more regarding transit versus the connected vision of a non-motorized corridor. I apologize about that.
Okay, so let me, can I just state to make sure I'm clear? So, action 1 is where potentially active transportation fits, but action item 2 you see is more about transit?
Yes.
Buses, front runner, BRT?
Yes.
Yeah, that's helpful, that makes sense. So with that, with that in mind, are other council members comfortable with changing the language in action 1 to identify non, I mean, sorry, to identify active transportation corridor? That's the, that's what you're proposing, right, Councilwoman Price Huish? So are other council members comfortable with that?
The only thing I'd add then to what Councilmember Bradshaw said on action 2, because it, you do see further down in that goal, it is referring to ridership. So maybe rephrase this to start with increased transit ridership and enhancing by working with neighboring municipalities. So put that, just flip the sentence structure, so it's right at the start of this, this goal is referring to ridership.
Everybody okay with that change, that suggested change?
I was going to maybe suggest and ask Councilwoman Price Huish, does she want to instead do her insertion somehow into action item 1 rather than action item 2? To me, it fits better in action item.
Oh, no, it is in action item number 1.
Yeah, that was the?
Okay.
That was the idea, so?
Oh, if you notice, action item 1 and 2, the sentences start exactly the same, so that's where I was having a hard time trying to figure out which one you were putting it into.
Sure, yeah. So Councilwoman Price Huish's idea was for action number 1 to include the words active transportation instead of non-motorized. And then Councilman Murray's idea was to just flip the sentences in action 2 so that we start with increasing ridership, transit ridership at the, toward the beginning of the sentence. So are council members okay with those ideas?
I wouldn't start it with, I'm sorry I interrupted, I wouldn't start with increasing, I would start with develop strategies.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah.
As a goal, start with that.
Okay. Okay, are all council members comfortable with that? Great, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else on this page, on a connected community, before we move to the next page? Okay, let's talk about an active community. Any questions or thoughts on this page?
I actually had a question on goal 1, action 1. So where it says, analyze park accessibility based on resident proximity. I thought after, where it says resident proximity to, I think we need to refer to what the proximity is. So, resident proximity to existing infrastructure to identify possible future needs. So I would propose that we add a few words here, where it says, where we can say, analyze park accessibility based on resident proximity to existing infrastructure to identify possible future needs.
Any questions or thoughts on that?
I have a question on that resident proximity.
Okay.
I think that what Councilwoman Price Huish is suggesting, I think that would clear it up if that's, if that's what that intends to say.
The intent of this action is to study how our residents are served by parks, and what is their proximity to being able to walk? That's, that's why we wrote, that's why it's intended by using the word accessibility, in that we want to see if we could recognize, can all of our residents have access within 15-minute walk, 10-minute walk, 5-minute, or making that bigger? I don't know what that number is, that, or that distance, you could do it by minutes or by distance, but it's about studying our city needs regarding that. That's the intent.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Okay.
The idea is that there's like a park desert, sometimes like when we talk about food deserts. Some neighborhoods have a park desert, and so we're saying that we want to identify a proximity to solve those deserts.
Exactly.
I'm wondering then if infrastructure is the right word, because infrastructure to me sounds like, do we have roads or sewer or water lines? And that's probably not the issue. The issue is, do we have the ability to add a park because we've purchased land or have a trail or something that can serve the outdoor needs of an active community?
So, resident proximity to existing parks?
Park landscape or park infrastructure?
Because we want to identify, I'm not sure what the right word is, but we're, we're trying to identify where we have gaps?
Yes.
Or a negative amount of parks. So I don't know what the right word is, but infrastructure just didn't strike me as the right word.
May I suggest something? What about saying, analyze accessibility based on resident proximity to parks to identify possible needs?
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Everybody else sound fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else on this page before we move to the next page?
Yes. Okay, action item 3, where we say, where we know that we are living in a time of water conservation in the second driest state in the country, where we say, consider water-wise landscaping principles. I would propose that we change that to use water-wise landscaping principles. We use the word use in other places instead of consider. In fact, In fact, just in Action, the action above this, I would propose we say, "Use water-wise landscaping principles." And we could say, "Where appropriate on city-owned property." But I would hope that we could make this a little bit more intentional than just consideration, but a commitment to actually using these principles as we move forward.
Council members, you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm seeing yes and a yes. Okay. Okay, so if we could make that change, any other thoughts on that? From you, Francisco?
No.
Okay. All right, anything else before we move to the next page? Okay, let's talk about an efficient and resilient community. Any questions or thoughts on this page? I love this page. I mean, this just has to be our focus. We have to get the utilities. We have to provide the infrastructure and utilities for our residents. So I thought this was a great page. Any additions or suggestions?
Well, I actually think it would be good to use a word that we use another time in this, but in Goal Two, Action Two. I think something that we're all mindful of here, and we've discussed this many times, is looking to the future. What's our capacity? What's our ability to continue to provide the level of services? Whether it's water, power, all of our basic infrastructure needs. And so here in Goal Two, Action Two, I would propose that we say, "Review utility capacity and capital plans." We do, in Action Two and Goal One, say, "Analyze utility capacity in areas better suited for redevelopment and infill." But I think as we're looking to capital plans and looking at future land uses, I would also like to include that kind of qualifier, that we're looking at utility capacity also when making our capital plans. So that would be my recommendation on Goal Two, Action Two, to say, "Review utility capacity when making capital plans to account for currently permitted and future land uses."
Okay, council members, any thoughts on that?
I think that's a good add. Especially because it's not saying we will automatically add capacity, we'll review, we'll review what the capacity is, which means reviewing the limitations and the pros and cons, the capital plans that would be required if we were to take care of just currently permitted uses and future uses. It's smart to be aware of what our capacity limitations might be, and if they're good limitations or if they're limiting us for bad reasons, then we need to plan for it. So I think it's a good add.
True. Okay, great. Okay, you've got that addition, Francisco?
You did.
Okay.
Actually, could I read it real quick?
Yeah.
"Review utility capacity when making capital plans to account for currently permitted and future land uses."
Is that what everyone has in mind? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, let's move to the last page, "A friendly community with lively community events and neighborly connections." Okay, what if any questions or thoughts do you have on this page?
I had a thought about Goal Two, Action Item Three.
Okay.
There are three sentences in this goal, and they could almost be three individual action items, which would mean Goal Two has six action items. And I just wondered if that last goal, it feels like a catch-all where we didn't want to go past three action items, but they seem like they could be broken out.
Hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah. Do council members feel, agree that maybe we should break those out into different action steps?
Yeah, I feel good about that. Those are three very different things. It might be useful to have them as separate action items.
Okay.
I also agree with that. It's a good point.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I have a follow-up question, if I might, on that.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're to interpret that, like, Action Item One is most important and Action Item Two is secondary and, you know, in order when the staff and the council will get to these. If we were to interpret that, that going down in order was kind of the the order we would try to achieve these action items to implement the goal, I would want us to make, take steps to preserve the tree canopy. Number three, I don't really have a preference on whether facade rehabilitation or the arts venues or galleries is four and five. But, you know, we've got a separate goal on the city's tree canopy, and so I think it's just important that if we are to interpret them as being in order, that that one stays higher.
Yeah, that's a good question. Francisco, did you interpret these goals to mean priority order?
We have not had a priority discussion regarding any of these. So it's just whichever came first when either the consultant or we reviewed them as I put them together. So there's no priority in the actions.
Okay, they're simply action items that we expect to take, but not in prioritized order.
Correct.
Great. Okay, the other question I had on this was on Action, on Goal Two, Action Two. Identify and improve pedestrian transportation experiences such as adding bike racks. I remember Councilman Bell Jesse saying something about pedestrians on Main Street and that maybe bikes not being on Main Street makes for a better pedestrian experience. And so I just thought it was an interesting idea that to improve pedestrian experiences, you would add bike racks, but maybe you can help me with the.
Absolutely, and I do recall Jesse's comments regarding a bike route may not be, Main Street may not be the best possible area to try to accommodate, in an effort for active transportation, a bike facility such as a bike route. However, this has to do with bringing people down to Main Street and someone that may have the ability to ride their bike to Main Street, why not provide a place for them to lock their bike? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. We don't have much more time, but just any last comments or questions on this page?
I have a comment on that.
Bingo.
Okay, I just had a comment on that same action, on Goal Two, Action Two, where it says, "Enhance the community identity by improving the appeal of key urban spaces." And I think we have Main Street, but I would propose that we also include in Action Two at the end of the sentence, "Along Main Street and high utilization parks" for adding, for identifying and improving, like Town Square, Bountiful Park, Washington Park.
So you're saying you would like to see bike racks added at high utilization parks?
Yes, because I think that ties in with improving the appeal of these key urban spaces.
Okay, any thoughts on that from other council members?
I'm fine with that.
Just wondering if adding the term "high utilization", does that complicate things? We just add parks?
Well, some parks, I think, might not warrant it, but I think you look at Town Square, Creekside, Bountiful and Washington. Those are our four large, really highly utilized parks that people do bike to. There are, you see people, I mean, I would even be fine with calling them out by name, but.
So maybe we could say, "Such as adding bike racks along Main Street and parks as needed," or something like that?
I think, I would suggest we go, we maybe name the parks by name. I think there is something to the idea that we we want families and community members and people going to jobs on Main Street to consider riding their bike and then feeling like they have a safe space to store it while they get off their bike and go to a restaurant, go to a shop, go to an event at one of the parks. And those parks, you know, while I know that there are families that probably ride to Lewis Park or Rocket Park or any of the others, there's, I think, some synergy we're trying to inspire on Main Street that includes Town Square, Bountiful City Park. I'm okay adding Washington, but I don't know that it has quite the same connectedness to Main Street that Town Square and Bountiful City Park do.
Okay. Other council members, are you in favor of specifying some parks that we would like to see bike racks added to?
Yeah.
Okay, Town Square, Bountiful City Park, what are your thoughts?
I think that's fine. I think North Canyon Park gets a lot of bike traffic as well. I just want to make sure to include all that are highly utilized for bikes, so.
So Francisco, are you okay with us giving that to you? And maybe you can come up with some language and then we can look at it. But your point is well-taken, that's a good point. And we do need to move on here.
I just had one quick.
Yes, please, Councilman.
For the community, Goal Two, and the splitting out of Action Three, taking the steps to preserve tree canopy, we could remove that sentence and rewrite the goal on the page before, the resilient community, Goal Three, Action One. Goal Three, Action One specifically talks about tree canopy, so we could just tie that canopy all in one goal.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I like that, making it simple. It's already there. We're already, it's already a goal. Are council members okay with that? Just including the tree canopy in the.
Welcoming community.
It's an efficient and resilient community. Page 10, Goal Three, Action One.
I think I would agree with Councilman Murray if we make sure we include that language of taking steps to preserve. So it's not just the inventory, but we're adding that language.
So if it said, "Inventory existing street trees to evaluate and preserve the urban tree canopy," you'd be comfortable with that?
Sounds good. Okay. Any last comments? We do need to move on in our agenda, but are there any last comments about this document? I really appreciate your thoughtful review, council, and that's wonderful. We've gotten through the goals. That's great. Thank you so much. Tiff Miller's here from the South Davis Recreation District, and we're really glad that you're here. So we'll turn the time over, are we turning the time over to you? Okay, we'll turn the time over to you, Tiff. Thanks so much for being here, and hopefully we're giving you enough time.
I can go as fast or as slow as you want me to, so. I don't know if there's a time that y'all need to be towards the regular meeting, but is there a good pace that you want me to be on? So I can always come back at a later date if there's more questions or information that you want.
Oh, yeah, no. So, you know, we have 10-ish minutes, but if you need more, then we'd love to.
Yeah, I will try to stay within 10 to 15, if that works for you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks for having me. What I like to do every year is just come and go for a sort of year in review for the district. So we are just wrapping up, well, almost wrapping up our 2024 year as y'all are on the June to July, or the June 30th, June 1st to June 30th. We're on the January 1st to December 31st. So our fiscal year just ended in December, so we're wrapping up all of our stuff. So I just want to give a year in review of how 2024 went, some updates on some of the current items that we're working on, some of the things we're doing, and just sort of talk to you about those types of things. And if there's any questions, anytime, feel free to stop and ask me. But I do want to say that 2024 was a good year for us. Tyson and I have been looking at the numbers, wrapping up the numbers recently for the revenues for 2024. We're looking at about, right about $500,000 in revenues for 2024. So that's a positive for us. 2024 is a busy year for us in a lot of other ways. We started a new budgeting process. I think we talked about that a little bit last year, how we were just starting that. So we've got about a year into that now, so that new budgeting process has gone through. It gives us a way to sort of narrow down and really focus on certain programs. So that's really been a benefit for us, I think, this last year. And I think going through this next year, we'll have a good baseline of what those programs look like going forward into the future, whether or not we need to make changes, maybe see for programs that we don't need to run anymore, things that maybe we want to grow and expand because they're doing so well. But the budget's really been helpful for that. It was quite a process for Tyson and staff, and my staff as well, but it went well. And I think we're continuing to tweak it and make it work for us really well going through 2025. So I don't know if you, do we have the presentation? You don't have to, I can just go through it. Did everybody get a copy of that?
It's in their packet, yes.
Perfect. So just going through, a couple of things to sort of touch on is the Bountiful City partnership with the district. Talk about some SDRD updates that we have, some program numbers, some district highlights. So the first thing I want to touch on is just the unique relationship that we have with Bountiful City. Obviously, the district was formed through putting a rec center in Bountiful City Park, where a lot of other things, including the Bountiful Bubble, used to exist. So we share our spaces in the city. We utilize a lot of the parks for our programs. So we use Rocket Park quite a bit. We use tennis courts and pickleball courts for our summer programs. We also use the parking lot at Bountiful City Park. So Gary and I talked about in a couple of years, that parking lot's going to need some TLC. So we're looking at that in the near future as well, probably in the next two years or so. So just trying to figure out how we work together, and I think we've always worked really well together. I think we have a lot of interlocal agreements with you guys. Obviously, I've been talking about Tyson. Tyson spends a lot of time with us. Miranda spends a lot of time putting in our numbers. Quick note, Miranda and I have known each other for like 20 or 15 years now? Yeah, sorry. We lived in Charleston at the same time, Charleston, South Carolina, so random fact. But we do share a lot of things together, and so we want to continue to grow that relationship and continue to make that work for everybody. So if there's questions or the things we can do better and help you guys and be better neighbors, just let us know. One of the things we work together on is the Bountiful Ice Ribbon. That opened in 2020. Every year's been a great year at the ribbon for us. So far this fiscal year, we're seeing about $14,000 already, more than we had fiscal year last year. So right now, we're looking at about a $40,000 to $50,000 revenue for the ice ribbon itself for 2024 or 2025. So we're looking at that and seeing how positive that looks. And it's been a great relationship there. It's done really well for us, and I hope it's been really good for the residents of Bountiful as well. We've worked with you on the RAP tax. That's been a great benefit for our movie nights and some of our races and events that are free to the public. As I mentioned, we have the interlocal agreements through our HR and finance with you guys. So those continue to do well, and each year we revisit those numbers and revisit that process. And I guess we'll be doing that in the next month or two, so that'll be coming up soon as well. Some updates for us for SDRD. So if you haven't gone to our website recently, you should. We've got a brand-new website. It's a lot, it's more mobile-friendly. It's easier to follow. It's easier to find things. So we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that worked a lot better for the residents, because we got a lot of comments about how mobile-unfriendly it was. And so we've been making the changes, and we made those changes and worked with a company called Streamline that is specific to special districts. So all they do is websites for special districts, and we went through them, and they've done a great job helping us with that. And on the website, it helps us to find what's going on program-wise and events-wise. So we do have some events coming up. We are 18th anniversary already. It's hard to believe it's been 18 years now that the bubble's gone. It's 18 years of the rec district. We have a Splash and Sprint Triathlon in the beginning of May. In May, we'll have a closure of our ice rink to do some maintenance that we have to do every five, six years or so. We have to take the ice all the way down, melt it, repaint the floor. We'll do some other maintenance around that. We'll be replacing our dasher boards. other maintenance around that, we'll be replacing our dasher boards, they've never been replaced since we've opened the facility, so all, all the walls inside the ice rink will have to be changed during that May time period, so it's about three-week time period or so that will be closed. This Saturday, and I, I hesitate to promote it, but it's the same time as your egg event with the youth council, but we have our own egg dive at a, starting at nine o'clock, and that's all I'll say about that, nine o'clock on Saturday. So we talked a little bit about 2024, we're looking at about $500,000 for 2024. Great for us, we saw a steady increase in purchases of annual passes, over 28,000 more visitors to the facility. We saw increases to our programs such as flag football, we introduced more mental wellness programs, and our new budget, like I mentioned, has allowed us to do better things, to be more focused on the programs and seeing how they're doing. We are, we are seeing increases in some of our stuff, especially our utilities and insurance and maintenance expenses continue to rise, just as they do for a lot of people, but we're trying to offset those by bringing in new, more people into our programs, we're seeing better annual pass sales, like I said, so those things are doing well. And mentioning our annual pass sales for 2025 so far, we're already about $26,000 more than we were at this point last year in annual pass sales, so that's great numbers for us, and we're excited about that. And our daily admissions are up about just over $12,000, so we're seeing really good numbers for this year. The first three months, the first quarter of the year's been really well, gone really well for us. Our programs for our sports just wrapped up registrations in March, we just started them this week, and we saw 335 more participants this, this year than we did in years past. So, I mean, great numbers there, now we're just making sure that we don't go too big because we want them to be fun and want them to be able to fit in all the areas that we have. So we are always looking for more spaces to put our programs in, such as our junior jazz program, we utilize the school district, and we're utilizing field spaces through the cities, through the school district for our other programs as well. So 2025 is going really well for us so far. Some future projects, I think we've talked about some of these in the past, I won't stick on them too long, but one of the big ones is the locker rooms at our facility. Last year, the state put some guidelines in that they wanted to see for, for locker rooms, so we're looking at how we can make those work in the future. We don't have any plans at this point, but that's one of the projects that we're looking at. We're also looking at additional access and egress to the facility, pool growth possibilities, all those types of things, so. And as I mentioned, the parking lot possibility in the next few years. And then we also created a sponsorship package for 2024 and 2025 going forward, and we'll make updates and changes to that as needed, but we're starting to see some people interested in that, so we're hoping to see some of those, some revenue come in for sponsorships in the near future as well. So I wanted to touch on some upcoming and current programs, memberships, Bountiful District comparisons, so just sort of give you an idea of how many people from Bountiful are utilizing the district and our programs. Starting with the memberships, right now, we're about 706, 7,635 memberships as of last Thursday, so we're seeing really good memberships there. If you looked at our memberships last year, they're a little bit different. We do have insurance memberships that we collect for. So in the past, we used to just re-sign everybody up that was in there, now we don't do that. We're bringing in, when they come in, we sign them back up for their insurance memberships, but we're actually seeing higher revenues for the insurance memberships, so more people are utilizing it, we're just not putting them into the system, so it makes the numbers look a little bit different, but we're still higher overall for our paid annual passes, EFTs, our monthly passes and things like that than we, than we were last year. So we're about 235 memberships higher, if you take out the insurance memberships, than we were last year at this point. So we're seeing great numbers there, as I've mentioned before, our annual passes up really about $26,000 this year, we're going to continue to see good numbers there, and we're excited about that. So looking at some of the individual programs, so I wanted to focus on the rec programs because they affect the youth a lot, and I think that's one of the more important things that we do for our community is youth sports. I'll touch on some adult sports too, but we are seeing less participation in our adult sports. We did have, we did, as we looked at our new, our new budget process, we looked at our sports, and we looked at how the cost were lining up with the revenues, and a lot of our adult sports were, were in the, in the red, so we've adjusted our pricing, and I think that's affected some of the participation numbers there. So we're trying to figure out what that's going to look like going forward and seeing if we need to adjust certain things again, or if we're certain programs that we may not be able to do just because they cost the district too much to run. So we're analyzing those as we go forward, but the youth programs are doing really well. Junior Jazz, our 2024 winter revenue, so our, our January through March season, we had about $80,000 in revenue this past winter, we had $105,000 in revenue. Our participation numbers in 2024 were 1,039, 2025, 1,223. So we're seeing a lot of additional participants. Bountiful in, in general, had 460 of those participants and in 2024, and in 2025, 547, so 87 more participants, about a 50, about 16% increase in participation from 2024. So seeing great numbers from the, from the youth in Bountiful. One thing I forgot to mention about our memberships, about 45.3% of our members are from Bountiful, and about 43.7 of just passes are Bountiful residents, so almost half of our usage for passes and memberships is from Bountiful City. So continuing to look at programs, we have our youth soccer program, that's continuing to grow. This past registration season, we saw $10,000 more almost in revenues, we saw about 50 more participants, or 60 more participants. And 51 and a half percent of the total participants were from Bountiful City. So, I mean, we're seeing great usage from Bountiful residents. Our youth flag football program, we added an additional day this year, so we actually increased our flag football participation by almost 160 players this year. So we went almost $15,000 more in revenue, which is a great, great number for us. Participants jumped up from to 634 compared to 468. So 51 and a half percent of total participants are from Bountiful, and about 27% increase just because we helped, we grew that program a little bit. Youth volleyball's growing as well, so $20,000 in 2024, about $3,000 more than last year, excuse me, 2025, excuse me. Participants are up 18 and a half percent, about 55% of youth volleyball participants are from Bountiful. $21,000 last year for baseball, so we do baseball through, if we have enough participation through seventh and ninth grade, seventh through ninth. Right now, this year, we didn't have anybody participate, so we don't have that age group, but we're going up through sixth grade. We, we moved up about $4,000 in revenue this year compared to last, about 70 participants more. Forty-four and a half percent of those are Bountiful residents, but we do have Mueller Park baseball as well that goes on at the same time, so those numbers are affected by that. But we're seeing great numbers there, about 20% more Bountiful residents than in 2024. Swim lessons are going really well this year too, so, I mean, we're, we're, we're seeing a lot of positive trends. But just looking at 2024, there were 1,744 swim lessons for, for Bountiful residents. That makes up about 43% of what we did in lessons for 2024. So right now, we're about 42 and a half for 2025, so about the same number, and we're continuing to see those grow. The number of participants we have is more than last year at this point, and we're seeing better revenues there as well. So overall, the, the South Davis Rec Center is being, is very busy. This, this is probably the slowest time of the year for us as we get into the spring, when everyone wants to get back outside, and then we'll get into May, we'll be a little bit slower, obviously, more this year just because the ice, the ice rink will be closed for a few weeks. But we're, we're getting into our normal outdoor programming, those programs are starting up this week, as I mentioned. We're seeing more interest in hockey, as you can, might expect, with a new NHL hockey team with the, with the Olympics coming in, I guess, 2034. I mean, there's a lot of interest for ice, and we only have the one sheet, so hopefully we're going to be able to figure out ways to get people in and out of there and work it a little bit better. But hockey is definitely becoming more and more popular, getting more and more demand for use there, so we're adding more opportunities for people to go and work on skills in their stick and puck sessions, and trying to find more opportunities for those groups. So we're continuing to utilize the fields that we are, if the gyms, the school district, we're still talking to the school district about possible help with pools, I'm not sure where they're falling on their pools, they're talking about building their own, so I guess next week they have a meeting that will sort of find out more information there. But overall, 2025's going well. Just a couple of district highlights to end, end on today. We started a Dr. Nedley's program for people that need some help with mental wellness, and it's gone really well for us. 2024 was our first year really getting into it a lot, and 2025's going well so far with our participation, so we're continuing to see that grow, hoping to get more people involved because we definitely want people to be physically fit, physically fit, but also mentally well when they're coming into the community, so they can feel better, feel happier, and feel good about themselves. In 2024, we had 28,000 more visitors than 2023. So far, we're already 8,000 more than 2024 through the same timeframe, so we're seeing some good numbers there. We ordered a new Zamboni for 2025. We, we hadn't ordered one in over 10 years, and they, they tend to get old, they're not cheap, so hopefully we'll get this new one in May, just in time for the, the ice rink to close down. Then we'll make some new changes to our entrance at the ice rink, we'll be adding in a turnstile and a couple, a scanning turnstile as well as some mechanical ones for people to exit and entrance there. Try to make that a little bit more controlled than it's been since we opened. As, if you've been to the facility, you walk in, you can walk straight to the ice rink, but you have to go through the turnstile to get to the pools and fitness and all that kind of stuff, so we're trying to make that match up, so that once we have programs that people are registering for, coming in to sign up for individual activities, they can just use that turnstile. If it's a group, like a hockey group, then we can just open the gates and allow people in because they're just running in the ice. But, so we're looking to do that in May as well. And as I mentioned, hockey, it's, it's coming, it's getting busier, and we're looking for more opportunities for us to be able to fit it into our facility. So overall, positive things for the rec center. As I mentioned, I'm happy to come back once we have our final numbers for 2024 and present those to you as well, or whatever works best, I can forward that on to you and give those to Kate, and she'll obviously hear about them pretty soon. But we're just, we're excited about the future, we're looking forward to continuing this progress that we've made, and we're hoping that 2025 will keep moving on like it's been going, and that, positive things for this year, so.
Thanks.
Any questions that I can help answer?
Yeah, any questions from the council?
That was kind of a lot of talking really fast, so I apologize.
Well, I'm sorry because we, we kind of ran out of time, that was...
No, that's fine.
I'm sorry about that, but, but thank you for your overview, and we know that you've been working to make changes to, and we, you know, since Councilmember Bradshaw is on, is on the board there, she does keep us updated, but it's really good to get an overview from you, so, thanks very much for your time and for being here.
Sure, yeah, I'll try to come back later in the year as well.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We'll just take a brief break, and we'll be right back for our regular council meeting.